Okay, this is the District Operations Committee for the twentieth of October. Roll call, please.
Yes, good morning. Director Matt Sampson.
Here.
Director Monte Schmidt.
Here.
Director Jed Smith.
Here.
And Vice Chair Ranjeet Kush.
Here.
And Chair Larry Russell.
Here. Okay. Need a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments on the agenda?
I just want to point out that we noted that item four A has been rescheduled to a future meeting or tabled for now to be rescheduled, so.
Four B.
Oh, I'm sorry, four B.
There are no public comments.
Okay, can we get a vote, please?
Yes, Director Sampson.
Aye.
Director Schmidt.
Aye.
Director Smith.
Aye.
Vice Chair Kush.
Aye.
And Chair Russell.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, public comment on items not on the agenda?
There are none.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Director Sampson.
Aye.
Director Schmidt.
Aye.
Director Smith.
Aye.
Vice Chair Kush.
Aye.
And Chair Russell.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, item C, district paving cost update.
All right, good morning, Directors. I'm Alex and I are Acting Engineering Director. This morning, we have Mark Hazray, who's the Engineering Manager for the Construction Group, who'll be providing an update on the paving.
All right, thank you, Alex. Good morning, members of the board. Mark Hazray, let me get the presentation going. Okay, so this presentation today is brief to update the board on the paving costs of the district. We'll go over the Operations Division paving budget, comparing the budget to actual expenditures. We'll highlight recent cost savings related to some of the recent district paving work. We'll provide an update to the board on our trends that we've been seeing the last few fiscal years, and then discuss an upcoming professional services agreement and a proposed pilot program around how the district performs pavement restorations. We'll conclude the presentation with a highlight of some staff initiatives and some next steps. So the table here shows over the last five fiscal years, a basic comparison of budget to actuals for the district operations work. Essentially, what it shows is for the paving budget, we see about a four X increase in the overall budget and about a three X increase in the actual expenditures. And ultimately, it demonstrates that in prior fiscal years, we've been a bit surprised by how much pavement we've been installing on an annualized basis. We've since made some adjustments in fiscal years twenty-three and twenty-four, and we were, we did complete our pavement work associated with operations within budget, and we anticipate completing fiscal year twenty-four within budget as well.
How much are the differences due to change in cost of the paving? Per square foot?
Could you, could you repeat the question?
Yeah, how much is due to inflation of the cost?
So, so, yeah, yeah, inflation, there are factors such as the crude oil and aggregate base. It represents a pretty minor portion. I would say about twenty percent. The, we're going to point out that the engineering news record over the same timeframe increased by about fifty-four percent. So there, there's, there's a significant discrepancy with how much we're installing versus what we're seeing in the industry.
So it's mostly square footage of paving?
That's exactly right.
Cost per square foot.
Correct, that's exactly right. So at every level throughout the district, we're making every effort to manage our pavement costs. We have realized some cost savings in some jurisdictions by adjusting how or where we install our pipeline within the roadway. For example, the typical county standard detail shown on the right shows a trench width that's a function of pipe diameter. And for the six to eight inch pipe, we typically install in the streets that results in about a thirty-six inch trench. We've however been able to demonstrate very quality trenching and excavation operations with a narrower trench, about twenty-four inches, which saves about thirty percent cost overall. It not only decreases the amount of overall paving we install, but also the amount of excavation and backfill that we perform. It also has less impact to the community because the hauling operations are reduced, the construction operations are expedited, and less material is being hauled to a landfill, and less material is being extracted from quarries. Now, it is important to note that the cost savings shown on some of the recent pipeline replacement projects depend on circumstances, they depend on the jurisdiction. And while we can't expect this type of savings on future projects, we're going to take some of these lessons learned and apply them to future projects, and it'll hopefully inform our pilot program. So moving on to paving expenditures, the plot on the right shows our operations costs since two thousand twelve, that's shown in blue. And it compares that to the engineering news record, construction cost index, which is specifically for the Bay Area. And this is that forty-five, or sorry, fifty-four percent we were mentioning in the construction costs in the Bay Area over that twelve years, while our overall paving costs have increased by over a thousand percent now, ten X. Our expenditures currently do fit an exponential growth pattern, and we are focused on better understanding these last two fiscal years in twenty-two and twenty-three. You can see our actual expenditures were about three point three million in fiscal year twenty-three. And we'll speak to some of the analyses were performed to better understand this.
It's exponential now, but it has to flatten off, right?
Exactly. Now, you know, I would.
That's the question.
Yes.
If we wouldn't do what we're doing, of course, well, maybe the standards increase. There's one jurisdiction that is going at times beyond the county standard. So that's really what this is about. As we get into it and understanding our expert and pilot is then working with our communities to show success in a different approach and the standards that are driving these costs that may not really provide what folks are thinking.
On the other hand, I mean, it's physically limited. The width of the street is the width of the street, right? There's geographical limits.
At some point, yes.
So it has to flatten at some point.
At some point, sure.
But, sorry, Mark, just to follow, to be clear, the rapid increases in our costs are driven by a combination of changes in standards that jurisdictions are imposing on us as well as increased paving activity as some of our maintenance work increases. Is it that combination or is it primarily changes in standards?
It's a great question, Director Kush. It's a culmination of a number of factors. There are, of course, increases in unit pricing in our construction contract. There's the inflationary pressures that we've seen. And as we're showing on the, the plot on the left, in the number of street openings, which is directly proportional to number of pavement restorations, we, we, we see a slight uptick in the amount of pavement restorations performed, but it's inconsequential, especially when you look over a ten-year period. Really, what we're seeing, not so much an increase in the amount of work that we perform, but the overall amount of pavement we install per project or per, per restoration. And so looking at the number of street openings, we do see that slight uptick. And we've looked at that, we've attributed to a recent hire of quite exceptional Inspector Jason Perko. He's been able to look at some of the backlog paving projects that weren't able to be completed and, and tackle a few of those. But that is quite inconsequential compared to what we've seen overall. Again, over a ten-year period, we're averaging about four hundred and ten street openings per year. Looking at the amount of pavement we install, you can see on the right, the two-inch grind and overlay, which is the typical final restoration performed, as well as various pavement restorations between four and ten inch. And the two greatest drivers in our cost are the two-inch grind and overlay and the four-inch asphalt concrete. Consequently, these are the two restorations that are often dictated by the jurisdictions having authority. So for example, for every single restoration performed in the, in the county or city right away, there's a pre-pavement meeting between the city officials or the county officials and the district representative. At that time, the county and the city, or the city will lay out the final pavement restoration. And as General Manager Hornstein pointed out, that varies widely. It varies between the jurisdiction, it varies between inspectors. We often find the restoration exceed the county standards. And that's, that's essentially what we believe has, has driven our, our increase in costs.
And is that a negotiable thing, or is it basically if you complain, you're dead meat?
That's a great question. It, it's, especially on the operation side, it's often not negotiable, especially for the sheer quantity of work performed. We, we have a large volume of work that we need to accomplish, and negotiations and discussions can only go so far. However, when we find it to be truly inappropriate, we will engage the county or the city and try to find a more amenable solution.
Do you think you could break this down to which jurisdictions? You know, like, you've got the twenty-three, let's say they're four hundred and fifty, four hundred and twenty-five, something like that, openings. Are we having problems in certain jurisdictions more than others?
Well, it varies between jurisdictions, certainly. We can break that data down further.
We think it's a value.
Well, what we do know is generally the approach of the jurisdictions, and they are different. But as Mark noted, at times, it's also dependent on the individual inspector you may be working with in that jurisdiction. You know, the, the trench that Mark showed in an earlier slide, the reduced trench is an outcome of that kind of negotiation. So what we're making some headway in some, and I agree, it's not in any way like we're ringing the bell yet, but being able to do that starts to present data and information leading towards our pilot that will be able to advocate for alternative approaches.
Do we?
Overall strategy.
Do we show the repaving limits on our drawings?
Uh, no.
Maybe we should, with the idea being we run the drawings past the municipality that we're in, whoever, I assume, wherever we're working. And, you know, the, the time to complain is now, when you have the drawings, not out in the field when you say, oh, well, no, it was really this.
Yeah, Director Russell, if I could answer that, we have been starting to do that with, at the design level with the negotiations of the permit conditions.
Yeah.
So we have been identifying that, meeting with their inspectors and their engineers onsite to identify condition of the road, what their expected restoration is going to be along with our pipeline alignment. So we can kind of mitigate a lot of that stuff ahead of time before it gets into construction. So we have been starting to do that.
But remember, most, I, I think it's fair to say most, and it may be significantly high, Mark would know, of the work is associated with main breaks and that, right? So you really can't.
No drawings, right?
Right. You have it, you do a quick patch, and then you talk, and yeah.
I just wonder how much of this is them transferring the repayment responsibility to us?
Oh.
Because this morning in the paper, it says Smart's building a new Petaluma Bart, Bart Station, and it's like thirty-two million dollars, and there's a million dollars worth of paving that isn't included in that cost, which a lot of it is at grade crossings on McDonald and places like that that are being redone, which I'm sure is reflecting exactly this. Because they made a big point of it, that I think it's eight seventy thousand, is not included in that number.
Yeah, and, and what Alex was mentioning was exactly correct. While we have certain limitations in how we can engage on the operation side, we see a lot more opportunity to negotiate and discuss with our cities and the county on capital projects. And so we've made adjustments, not only through planning, but also design and construction. And so we all are, there's a staff initiative towards, towards being more cost effective, and that's where we've seen some savings there.
Of course, that leads me to the next question, which is, in twenty-three, how many of those are breaks and how many are capital projects?
So all of the data presented today is, is with regards to our operations division specifically.
Meaning breaks?
Main breaks, yeah. So this data is strictly what we've performed annualized on the operation side. We also did look at main breaks. We thought it would be important because one question you might ask, well, well, what if we just have more main breaks, right? More main breaks would directly increase the amount of pavement we're installing. We looked at the ten greatest main breaks over the last ten years, and we found that the overall sum or the total cost of those ten main breaks did increase proportionally in an exponential manner to the overall costs. However, we did find that as a function of the total pavement we install, that is flat. In other words, the portion or the percentage of the main breaks in, in overall paving, it's exactly flat. Whereas if the number of main breaks increased, you'd expect that to represent a larger piece of that pie, a larger percentage of the overall pavement. So it's really not a function of large main breaks. The unit pricing and the inflationary increases are several factors less than what we're seeing today. And that ultimately brings us to our proposed pavement study and ultimately a pilot program. We did select, or we did solicit proposals for this paving study. And as, as previously mentioned, the idea is to better understand our past and current paving practices, looking at structural alternatives to what's typically performed today. And that would be based on more of a depreciation model, life cycle model, cost benefit ratio that would actually, you know, and take into account the condition of the roadway, take into account other solutions beyond just repaving. And ultimately, these two efforts would inform a pilot program, and we would look to partnering agencies to implement a number of these alternative restorations and then monitor them over time, also offering an extended warranty.
Mark, is there a limit to how long the temporary can be on there before to the final?
Uh, not so much, really. The temporary payment is hot mix asphalt, so it can last years.
No, I understand that part. I'm asking about regulatory wise. Do they have a deal that says in ten days you need to finish it, or in thirty days you need to finish it?
Yes, yeah. Most encroachment permits do have a, a, a window where the final payment must be performed. For example, I believe the county encroachment says thirty days, and there are stricter timeframes, uh, city to city as well. So there are certain limitations, yes.
So when does that decision get made on how big the paving has to be? Does the county come out and mark the street or something?
That's exactly right. There'll be the pre-pavement meeting that will occur essentially a week prior to a planned scheduled pavement.
So after the repair is made, temporary is in, traffic's normal, they go out and mark this area with us?
With us, correct.
So we have some input?
We do, recently. Now, we, we, prior, we had less input because we didn't have that presence, and now we do. But yes, that's, that's exactly what happens.
Part, part of what we've done organizationally to support the program, we shifted kind of the responsibility for the paving program. We consolidated it. So now the program is in engineering, and they support the repaving activities associated with main breaks. It used to be separate in the organization. So that's really starting to help Mark and his teams doing a really nice job. Get our arms around this program, starting to really put data together.
I'll ask the next question, which is, you've heard before from me. Would it make sense for us to buy our own paving machine? You know, we're facing ten times the cost, maybe there's, it's becoming significant budget-wise.
It's a fair question. I don't, I don't think I've got a strong response to that. I think it's something we, if, if you'd like, we could look into. I, I, I tend to believe that it's, it would be challenging, it would be challenging to manage. We would have to maintain the expertise to operate rolling machines, paving machines. And there is a very large volume of work that's performed that, that uses multiple crews, not just one crew that we may have, we may be able to, you know, hire or have in-house. With the four hundred plus main breaks we have per year, I, I personally think it would be challenging to, to utilize a district crew.
We have one contractor who does the repaving?
That's correct.
So they're able to match the workload?
Correct.
Is it like full-time?
Yeah, um, yeah, well, it's full-time for one, one to two crews or more sometimes, depending on what the work is. It's, it fluctuates a little bit on a day-to-day basis. But they also, they also have a number of other contracts with other agencies as well.
So it doesn't sound to me necessarily that the, keeping the expertise current would be that difficult because there's enough activity, they probably would stay pretty good at it.
My, my experience on these kinds of things is, but we can look at it certainly that it, it's unlikely financially.
Yeah, that's.
It would be a driver, and typically you look if you're having kind of service level issues and that kind of stuff. And the contractors fairly responsive and doing a pretty good job. The, we'd like more competition as we go out for a new contract, that kind of thing. Typically, there's just one game in town in terms, and that's an issue. But, you know, the staff's been pretty good. For example, the, the last annual extension we negotiated to keep prices flat, unit prices. So they do work with us. They seem to be responsive and do pretty good work, as I understand it. So, but we can kind of rough that out and take a look.
Yeah, it would only make sense if we think we can do it at a lesser cost, but I presume we're bound by Davis Bacon too.
Well, Larry, I also think it'd be interesting to look at, instead of trying to treat the symptom, go after the root cause, and if the root cause is this mission creep from jurisdictions expanding what is right, are we, is it our responsibility then to go to find more solutions for that or address that piece?
Yeah, it's a good question, a good comment. It's both. Because, you know, mission creep is one issue, but also cost of doing it is another issue. And if you're doing enough of it, I mean, if you got four hundred a year, that's like one and a half a day or more, two a day, workdays. So, you know, that's quite a few. Now, I, I don't know, are they the size of this room, a typical one, or?
It, it varies widely. Sometimes there, this, this little footprint right here, maybe ten by four. It could be full street, two hundred feet in either direction.
I know there's one on Paradise that I drive over every day, right at the curve going around to head towards Tiburon, and it's like four foot by four foot or six foot by six foot, and it's been there for at least three or four years. And it, it, you know, it's no, no curb to curb, it's just this little patch.
Yeah, and if, if the, the circumstances dictate and the jurisdiction and even the inspector determine that with our district, you know, personnel, then that's, that's what the restoration is, and that's what the standard says. But there's a lot of conditions within those standards that allow for exceeding what is typical.
I mean, I think this is kind of, we've, we've had this conversation a number of times, and we're glad, this is great that we're coming back to this because it is really important. I, I think we're, you know, the case has already been made that in, in, in large part, it's the, it's the conditions that are being imposed upon the repair that is what's driving the majority of the cost increase. So if you keep nodding, I'm going to assume that I'm getting this all correct. And so the, the pilot project is intended to try to develop an informed response about what is a reasonable, a, a reasonable patch size, you know, and something that's consistent, makes total sense. Is, are the jurisdictions bought in on the pilot study? Because if we develop something that's a very reasonable approach to, to coming up with an informed proposal about what's a reasonable approach, but they're not bought into it, or they don't agree to, or whatever, we'll still be in the same situation. So I guess that's trying to drive this conversation forward, like we, our, our main problem is that our, maybe all or certain jurisdictions. I think it's important to know which ones where there is an inconsistency. And then how do we get those jurisdictions to, to get on board with developing a consistent approach so that we can budget accurately and that we can also keep costs down, you know, and reasonable to our customers? So.
So our, the overall strategy, we have a couple more slides that'll lay it out, is exactly that. First is kind of recognizing the jurisdictional perspective, which is, you know, the highest cost outside of public safety cities have is street maintenance and repair. And the history is not kind to their efforts. Meaning utilities, cable, water, sewers, go in PG&E in twenty years ago, you know, or whatever the year is, probably consistently did not do a good job, patches would fail, and the money would feel wasted and very strained. So they've moved this way. So our, our goal in this, our kind of strategy, so to speak, is to, through the pilot, and we do have some indication of support for the pilot with select jurisdictions. Others probably want nothing to do with it. So, but be able to work and talk about the pilot broadly and have everyone aware of it, and bring in informed data with our consultant expertise, who is a national expert on this issue, that, and data and evidence that these alternative approaches work just as effectively. And, you know, what can we do to work together with our community? So that's kind of the design, come well-informed with data, arm-in-arm with a couple jurisdictions from the pilot and engage in that discussion. I've tried early on to do it without all that data and quickly realized that's not going to be effective because fundamentally, their issue is the streets. And absent an alternative, they have this new county ordinance, and it's, it's difficult for them to pivot from that.
I think that makes total sense. I guess my process fundamental question is, is when to get the jurisdictions on board? And I find that it's vastly more leveraged if you go to them before the pilot study starts so that they have a particular question that they need to have answered as part of it. We have all that engagement and buy-in upfront before we make that investment.
That's a, that's a very good point.
Monte, but there's some balance, right? I totally agree with you that ensuring that we're answering the right questions for jurisdictions in the pilot is important. But we're also hoping to use evidence from these pilots to bring jurisdictions on board, right?
So. Absolutely, but I, I mean, and, and their participation in the pilot doesn't mean they're on board. It just means that they have had a chance to weigh in about what's included in the pilot study, and then the, the findings can still be a subject of negotiation. But I often find that when you try to bring evidence-based reasoning to a conversation, but you haven't engaged and gotten buy-in about what are the, what are the salient, you know, elements of, of the issue and whatnot in advance, you find that there's, you overlooked something.
Yeah, there, there's a very nice forum that I've gone to, and I, I think it does make sense as we meet with the two jurisdictions, let's say, that will be part of the pilot. Collectively, we'd bring it to the forum of city managers that meet every month as we kick it off and ask for any other input. I, I think that's.
Yeah, Ben, Ben, one other thought is, and I know we've talked about this, is, is I, I do believe that the county has a role here. You know, they have their own set of ordinances when we work with county property. But really, the issue here is that every jurisdiction is different, and some are exceedingly expensive for us and some are less. And, and we do, it would be great if we can have some consistency in a general thought process around it that uses some common standards and enables us to be more predictable. So I, I do believe the county is ready to talk to us and help us solve this.
Yeah, in fact, I haven't approached the county yet, but I do think our pilot, my intention is to do it once we really have a scope and understanding, to bring them along as one of the partners in the pilot. That would be very strong because it is their ordinance, their new ordinance that to set the table on all this. So I, I agree with you. I think they're key in this in part because most of the jurisdictions, if not all of them, are following the, the county ordinance, yeah.
The problem I see, though, is what's in it for them?
Right, so the next, right, I mean, we can predict, you know, we bring it there, maybe some will support it and some won't. There, there's a lot of ideas and discussions we'll have, and I'd say at that point, there may be a political element of getting involved. There may be things like, well, this one jurisdiction, the costs are twice as high, maybe those pipes aren't as prioritized. That's kind of hardball, and we'd work with the board on that. But we, we just really will need to think, but first, right, first, we need data, we need some element of buy-in to the pilot, and then.
I suppose you could take it a little. I suppose you could take it a little further. If we're experiencing breaks in a certain district, um maybe we should address replacing that pipeline. And get it over with so we don't have to face this fight each time about fixing that break.
We um that is absolutely part of kind of the fluid dynamic criteria of project selection. And it's not uncommon that, okay, this pipe, this is the third break in eighteen months. The residents are furious, the jurisdictions are give calling us, we juggle things around and and replace that.
Sure, but I I would think maybe that needs to be a little more formalized and put it in, you know, so that it happens. I don't know if they're, you know, how much difference there is between the municipalities. But it seems to me, I think Monty's point is excellent that um, you know, we we've got to get them. Coming in with a cooked cake that they don't want to eat.
Right.
It's pretty, but you know, they're just gonna say whatever. And and if we're having, it seems to me that we should be able to request a meeting of the minds of the inspectors. That there should be uniformity from their end, that we shouldn't have to deal with Joe's a problem. But Bob's okay, you know, that should be that should be worked audible at the municipal management.
Yeah, that that absolutely is part of the strategy for consistency, for budgeting, for just the time and energy of these individual negotiations. I I do want to just reflect for a minute, this is not our issue alone. Um as we've talked about that issue with Aqua, there was so much interest that led to a work group on this issue. Um recently, periodically, um we have calls of all the GMS in the Bay Area. I brought this issue up and there was a lot of interest in it as well. And you know, I'm familiar East Bay mud, for example, it's different in every jurisdiction. It is a very difficult issue. I think we have an opportunity here to kind of show a path. But you know, we we have the initial work to do.
It seems to me that I would thinking about like the sewer guys don't have breaks, more or less. I mean, they don't have emergencies. They might have a stoppage or something that could cause them, but if it's unusual, usually it's replacement. PG&E though is very close to us.
Right.
And they're across all these districts. So maybe we should think about looping them into this because they must have the same. I'm sure they're having the same discussions inside of PG&E bitching about the the cost of the repayment.
Yeah, it'd be interesting. I do know in one jurisdiction, PG&E cut a deal and just pays them. The cost of the full rehab and the jurisdiction likes that. But.
Whether they do it or not, huh? Also, you know, there's something that comes to mind when you see the PG&E. They primarily use steel plates for their initial cover. Now, that may be because they're still working. I don't know when they draw the line, when they pull the plates out. But you'll see these signs warning steel plates ahead, that kind of thing. So you know, but we don't do that and maybe our holes are too big for steel plates. I don't know, but maybe there's a um synergy there that could be put to you.
But 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 overall, I I I mean, I'm feeling like this uh approach of initiating a pilot program. That benefits from good early engagement with jurisdictions so that they're primed to receive the the findings. Seems like a uh an important step forward, so.
And and we and we too are hopeful at the staff level, we've found success. Uh you know, we're just communicating with the cities. Uh Alex and I both have personally met with city uh staff and and found um mutual understanding just by engaging with rationale. And and we're not looking to um be unreasonable. We're looking for what's fair and reasonable and representative of the condition of the of the roadway. So uh that leads us to the pavement study. Uh essentially, as we kind of discussed, we're going to evaluate our standards. We're going to evaluate our practices, how we engage the cities and how we've been paving our restorations uh past and present. We'll ultimately make recommendations for alternative uh pavement details uh that we would then use to build a pilot program. In collaboration with partnering jurisdictions. And that is a a kind of an optional or future task. So after this kind of initial study, we're going to take some of that data and engage the the possible jurisdictions for that pilot study. And work together to build that pilot study. Uh the schedule for this work is approximately two years, ending in Q four uh twenty twenty five. Uh that does include the uh implementation of the pilot study, at least beginning. Um and the fee is estimated at about a hundred thousand dollars, which excludes the pilot study. Because that's going to come after we learn more in in the prior two tasks.
Why two years? Because I'm just thinking exponential growth, you know, we're we're talking about a million dollars more in paving cost. You know, we could, could we pay to speed it up?
Uh well, the the effort to the the initial effort is is expected to take approximately a year. But they've added a year for the the pilot study and establishing site selection. We're going to work with uh partners to to locate sites. We're going to perform this work. We're going to offer monitoring, so we'll on an annualized basis monitor and then uh provide extended warranty. So we anticipate that to take longer than a typical, you know, consultant effort, technical memo and for example.
Do you, I mean, the only people I know that do this are professors. Are you envisioning somebody in the private sector?
Um yes, uh actually, so we we are uh going to be executing a contract with Kimley Horn. Their engineering consultant, one of the largest in the United States and they're experts. They've got experts in paving, both from kind of a public's background and private background. And uh yeah, we we did do some engagement with um uh professors as well. But a lot of their the professors are not interested, they're funded by Caltrans and city and county. So you know.
Interesting conflict.
Yeah, yeah, uh so we continue to coordinate with jurisdictions at every level in the district um to uh help. Uh identify pipeline replacement projects, uh if feasible in conjunction with city and county paving projects. We'll continue engaging Aqua uh paving standards group with other water agencies that that have similar uh challenges and and areas of opportunity. We'll execute the contract for pavement management services with Kimley Horn. And also in spring of twenty twenty four, we will be soliciting and executing a new construction contract for uh operations paving.
I think the one thing you should add to this is a presentation at the DWA. You should be submitting an abstract on this for twenty twenty four, which is Anaheim. As I recall, um so I think that would be an easy one.
We are interested in that. Unfortunately, abstracts uh have already uh passed. So we need we need a time to uh learn more and kind of build this. And I think that would be an awesome opportunity for for many water districts.
That deadline can be fixed.
Oh.
So.
It's good to know.
I know we're 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 um probably way past time that we thought we'd spend on this. Um but it's it's such an important issue, we've been talking about it for more than a year or so. In in and and it's complicated. I I know we're doing this this very logical approach of doing a pilot study to try to inform decision making, which is sounds very reasonable. I wonder if at the end of the day, it's just a negotiation with the district. And do we need to go through two years to basically sit down with them and just be like, look, there's we have ton, we have tons of past paving projects. You can go back and look at and say, this was done five years ago, this is what we did, this is how it was held up. You know, and and use past performance as as an indicator of how we might consider going forward. So I'm just wondering if there isn't a faster track when we're talking about an escalation like we're looking at uh that is exponential. Whether time is really, you know, of essence and whether really, you know, we can get there faster by just, you know, really saying like, this is a real. It's a real cost impact on people and and on on our rates and that's an issue of great sensitivity, so.
So we're already doing that uh at the staff level, but there's just so much uh complexity, there really is in uh the street structural sections. And and detailed information that we want better understanding of to to engage the cities. You know, in in absence of time from a city or county perspective, it's give us the most, do it now. But if we can get a better understanding of of the conditions, uh we can engage them in a in a more informed manner and find more collaborative solutions. A two inch granite overlay might not be uh the appropriate solution.
So so what Mark's saying is kind of operationally, we certainly will continue project by project advocating and pushing back as appropriate. I I indicated, but to be clear, um went to uh, I I've been to a number, but two of these city manager meetings specifically to talk about this issue. And um you know, of the whatever number fifteen folks around the room, maybe a couple were interested. I'd say a good number just vocally rejected the notion um that, you know, yeah, I get it. But you don't understand our budget, you don't understand what happens when we pave a road and you guys utilities go and dig it up. And we we need to protect this asset and it was said in a more emphatic way. The so it just really, you know, the the realization is we do need data. And we are not experts in paving. So bringing on the consultant to dig into it and help us understand. Where the county specifications may be off, maybe overly ambitious, what's reasonable, what's not? That's really just not information that we would have outside of going through this.
Okay, great, thank you, I appreciate the thought.
And I go back to the point, what's in it for them? That's what you're hearing, that's exactly what you just described. And I wonder how much the city managers know. I mean, the director public works, I understand, they're intimate. City manager, you know, it's kind of a another level above that, whether they're really intimate with that information or not is interesting. Probably with the budget, they know about the budget, but I doubt they know whether the section should be two feet wide or four feet wide.
Ben, Ben, I don't I don't know if you've heard the type of comments that I've had in my, you know, very brief discussions. Which are that, look, you guys have control over your revenues, you can raise rates, we can't. So there's not that much sympathy from this at this point regarding, you know, these issues that we face, at least from the little bit of experience that I've had.
The the cities are strained.
And the pushback on that though is it's all the same database, same people. So you can say, you know, it's fine, you can just raise them over here, but you're charging the same people for the for this. So that that's the way you, I would suggest you push back on something like that is say, look, you know, it's it's our same payer base. You know, it's not like it's going to go to the state of California versus the county. It's not a different payer.
But we really, right, obviously, at the end of the day, we need to demonstrate that an alternative approach will protect their asset. In the same way as a more elaborate and the trenches can be done and paved. And really understand, for example, um what requirements are being done for structural integrity? And then what is being done for aesthetic issues? And you know, that's an area to discuss, but we really need to have that information to understand that sort of thing. You know, i- if the the trench is too close to, I don't know, you guys were telling me, you know, where a street turns or so. You know, there's all these things in there that just drive that, does it make sense to do an elaborate? Work on a street that hasn't been repaired for years and years? And you know, in a few years, they're going to come in. So there there is, there there really is opportunity and we see kind of avenues, but we really need to be um have that. Kind of confidence in the data.
I would suggest you also consider looping Caltrans in because they have a lot of expertise in this issue. Um and I I don't know if it's relevant or not, but Caltrans repairs are done with quick set concrete. So you know, they they come in broad a section and in the morning, they're driving on that section because the concrete sets that fast. Now, I don't know if they allow uh different materials. In in other words, can you repair with a non asphaltic material? Or you think they would push back on that?
I could actually, I speak to that, I I given my experience with the municipality, so sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, my experience with municipalities and dealing with some of these permit conditions, they like to be consistent, replace asphalt with asphalt. And they really push back on anything different that even including CDF or trench backfill. So I don't see that being feasible.
Okay, well, I still suggest you talk to Caltrans because I think you'll find them to be very helpful and very knowledgeable. You know, they they deal with this now, you know, it's a little different because it's they're they're on both sides of the equation right there, the owner and the repair. But can't hurt.
Sounds like you guys are handling this well, collect the data, figure out what standards make sense, try to bring that to the different municipalities. Hopefully come up with a unified standard that people can agree to as much as possible. And I do think the county can help, but you're on the right track, thank you.
And just a couple of quick questions. Um the county standard that came out, was that um a contractor or consultant that helped put that out when the county standard for the paving came out? Maybe the first question.
Yeah, that that was actually a collaborated effort between the county and the other municipalities that put together that standard. So it was done in house.
In house, okay, thanks. And then um when we when we talk about a pipe replacement cost per mile, two million dollars is still thrown out there. Does that include the repaving in that? And then estimate what percentage of the rep or the total cost is the repaving for a mile of pipe?
It's a fair question, Alex, I don't know if you you have it off the top of your head, but you know, I would say maybe on a million dollar project. I would say a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars in paving.
Yeah, so roughly about thirty percent of the actual project cost goes to repave the street.
Thirty percent, okay, great, thank you.
Okay, any public comment?
Yes, um we have Mr. Jameson.
Yes, thanks, uh I think President Schmidt focused on the key issue. A previous presentation made it clear that San Rafael, among some other municipalities, has required a lot more paving than was needed to repair trenching. Effectively transferring the cost of repaving city streets to MMWD. This seems to be more a political issue than a technical one. It may be helpful to hear what is being done to remedy this, thanks.
Thank you. There are no further speakers.
Okay, great, any other board comments? Okay, let's go on to item D, engineering design service contracts. Musical chairs.
All right, exactly, that'll be me on this one, so let me get the PowerPoint. So I'll be presenting this item, uh update on the engineering design service contracts for upcoming capital projects. Good morning, directors, Alex and I, acting engineering director. I'll be presenting the site this morning. So in coordination and collaboration with our capital project, uh there's a couple of projects that have been identified in the capital budget that will require. Uh some assistance from uh engineering firms to help us uh provide design for those projects. So the first one of the projects is a Tokoloma Booster Pump Station. Uh it was originally built in the nineteen sixties and it's a pretty critical facility that supplies lake water from Nacashia Reservoir or our San Geronimo Treatment Plant. And uh that pump station has ability of flow anywhere between three and twenty million gallons of water a day based on need. Um so the pump station consists of uh one two hundred horsepower and five four hundred horsepower vertical turbine pumps. Uh which are actually located in this green building right here. I know some of you uh have been with me out there on site to see the site, so you've seen it firsthand. And all the electrical equipment for this pump station is actually located in the electrical building. And unfortunately, this uh pump station sold that the electrical equipment for this pump station is no longer manufactured. So uh sourcing and replacing these parts is very difficult. It's kind of as I mentioned, uh in the electrical pump station uh building, we we house the electrical switch gears, the full voltage starters, programmable uh programmable logic controls, fuses and all the other electrical equipment. And this image here on the left is an example of a nineteen sixties area that's in the pump station right now of the electrical motor that is, you know, served its time. And it's served us well for over sixty years since the pump station was installed. And in addition, with this work that we're going to be doing, we're going to be providing a pump and motor condition assessment. As you can see this picture on the left, uh that will help us evaluate the pump and motor efficiencies and determine uh replacement entities units if necessary. Uh you can see it's pretty tight, these are the four hundred horsepower pump and motors and the two hundred ones kind of tucked back behind over here. So uh staff have issued requests for proposals from uh engineering firms that specialize in pump station design and rehabilitation. Uh the selected consultant uh will evaluate the design and rehabilitate uh the pump station to include new electrical equipment, pumps, motors. And also uh fire harden the roof on the electrical building. Um all the old electrical equipment will be replaced with new modern electrical equipment, including switch gear, motor control centers, variable frequency drives and all their electrical equipment.
We can agree to the Quonset hut too?
Well, we'll look at that and see what that cost kind of shows out to. It's, yeah, it's a pretty unique uh, structure to cover that pump station.
Exceedingly unique.
Yeah.
I mean, it must be closing in on confined space.
It 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 does. It's close.
Yeah.
It's close. Yeah, so that that will also be evaluated.
Clever, but it's very unconventional.
It it does work for when it was constructed, but it's not conventional nowadays. I agree with that. Um, uh, this project has been identified in our adopted capital budget for fiscal year twenty fourth through twenty six. And uh, the proposals were issued and we expect to receive those back uh, in November for this project.
When was it built?
1960s.
And it's Ken Jinks?
I don't remember who the.
Looks like it.
Yeah, I I'm not familiar with the designs, but I could look into that.
Just curiosity.
Okay.
It just looks like it.
Gotcha.
Looks like Bill Seeger, actually, is what it looks like.
So uh, the next one of the projects that we're going to be seeking professional services is for.
Sorry, 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 Alex. On on that, um, on the upgrades for the Tokoloma pump, how aggressively you mentioned efficiency improvements for pumping operations. How aggressively are you going to be looking at op- opportunities to reduce overall energy requirements?
Oh, that that's part of the condition assessment evaluation. If it determines that the motors are already, you know, operating at inefficient rate, then that's going to be one of the drivers to replace them with the.
Presumably technologies have evolved a lot in terms of uh, better efficiencies. I mean, are there are there arguments for for replacing these with more modern equipment that is going to be less energy intensive?
Absolutely. There's always that opportunity, uh, Director Kush. And uh, some of these pumps and motors have been rewound and reimpelled, reimpelled. So that helps, you know, extend the life of the of the asset and give us better efficiencies. But again, like everything over time, it wears out and we do have to replace it. So that's what this condition assessment will provide us.
And don't forget thermodynamics. It's going to take so much horsepower to lift that water. And it's going to take that much horsepower. Now, the efficiency can be improved a little bit. We're talking about percents, not not ten percent. Um, what voltage is running at?
Uh, these are all medium voltage.
Meaning 1200?
To 2400 volts.
2400.
Yeah.
They've already taken that into account.
Correct, correct.
And and is there any any viability or reason to consider alternative energy uh, microgrid type options for this uh, facility? I understand that there is a PG&E connection, you know, and that's, but you know, are there, are there, is there any reason or opportunity to be looking at alternatives?
Uh, given the location, I mean, it's pretty remote out there uh, for a microgrid, but we could definitely look into that with a consultant to see if there's some opportunities for that type of uh, technology out there.
It'd be great to hear about that. I I I just can't imagine that this is not going to be a driving issue for us. Maybe not in the next five years, but certainly in the next 20 years, you know, just improving the overall sustainability of our operations.
Okay.
So the more we can think about that, I I I think that gets us ahead of the curve.
Okay, that's something we'll definitely look into.
How many pumps do you need to run to keep the the system in operation? I assume that's what they're going to do here is isolate and work around or they're going to, you're thinking about building parallel?
Uh, if we needed to do a pump replacement, for for instance, and uh, we would have to talk with the operations and coordinate with staff and run off of Kent instead of Nacasio.
I see.
And that way we, that would allow us and give us the time to take it offline to do the repair. If if that's the way we're going to proceed.
But I mean, the this could be six months.
Oh, easy, easy. Six months for sure. Yeah.
They could make that adjustment for six months?
Yeah, it well, it it's all, you know, driven by the lake levels and what our water rainfall is going to be and how full the lake is. So.
If we only knew that.
Well, yeah, that's a million dollar question, right?
Maybe more.
Exactly. All right. Uh, so the second one of these projects is the Phoenix Bon Tempe Connection. So uh, most of you or all of you are aware of this. So uh, the district has pumped Phoenix Lake water into uh, Bon Tempe Treatment Plant for production during recent droughts. Uh, this project would establish a new permanent connection between uh, Phoenix Lake to Bon Tempe Lake and is also has been identified as one of the district's no regret projects that would help improve operational efficiencies, which would allow frequent use of the water at Phoenix Lake. So uh, staff is currently working on the new uh, eighteen inch pipeline that will be connecting uh, Phoenix to Bon Tempe. And a portion of that pipeline will be going through the tunnel as seen on this image on the left, right here, along the left hand side of the existing pipe. And that's about 1300 feet in length. Uh, the location of the new pump station has been identified at the end of concrete pipe road. And that location is pretty uh, opportunistic because it is halfway between Phoenix Lake and Bon Tempe Lake, which will give us the uh, pumping capacity of up to three million gallons per day. So staff has also issued the request for proposals from engineering firms that specialize in pump station, uh, pump station design. Uh, the selected consultant uh, will design a new pump station with modern electrical equipment, including variable frequency drives, pump motors, as well as enclose it in a fire heightened, uh, fire hardened building. Uh, this project has also been identified in the adopted capital budget for fiscal year twenty fourth through twenty seven. And proposals for this is also due in November. Uh, the third of the projects is the San Geronimo Treatment Plant Roof Replacement. Uh, this roof was replaced in 2004 with a thermoplastic polyolefin or TPO roof membrane that covers the treatment plant control center, which is located right here and the filter uh, walkway right here. Uh, staff have been working with roofing contractors to evaluate and assess the roof and have identified multiple locations of dry rot and the uh, overhangs along with multiple leaks in the control center. So while the TPO membrane uh, will not catch on fire, embers from wildfires can burn holes through the membrane compromising the integrity of it. So TPO uh, roofs typically have a life, a service life of about 10 to 20 years. And this one's almost at its end of service life at 20 years. So the new roof that will be installed will be a new steel roof, having a service life of between 50 and 70 years. And it will also serve to harden the uh, our biggest treatment plant from fire. So the new steel roof will require structural modifications, which will require structural engineers and architects to design the roof. And staff has also issued a request for proposals for that uh, firms specializing in building structural modifications.
It won't be flat.
No, it will not be flat. It will be pitched.
That's the bottom line.
Exactly.
Got to build an arch or trust to make it slope.
Exactly. And and this leads us to our our last but not uh, least uh, Sula Huli Pipeline Project. So currently, right now, when the district wants to make use of the Sula Huli water, we have to pump it over three and a half miles over the hill and it discharges overland. From there, water flows uh, for approximately two miles into a tributary creek of Nacasio Reservoir, which is all prone to soil absorption and evaporation. So as you could see here on this picture or image on the left, the discharge point of the existing pipeline is kind of hidden behind these trees back here and it overland flows going through the vegetation, series of culverts, and then it continues down, even though it's not seen here, this tributary creek into Nacasio. So it's, it's got a long way to go and there's a lot of prone uh, areas for absorption and evaporation along the way. So uh, this project uh, has been identified in support of the Sula Huli Electrification Project, which uh, district staff is currently working on. Uh, the new pipeline will connect the existing end of pipe right about this location and convey all that water via pipeline about two and a half miles into the main body of Nacasio Reservoir. Now, this will ensure that all the water we pump from Sula Huli goes directly into the reservoir. This project.
Where else would it go?
Well, it could evaporate, it could get exordent, so that 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 ensures that everything goes into the lake. Uh, so this project in the length of it has a number of complexities ranging from environmental permitting, land surveying and right away uh, easements uh, to accommodate the new pipeline. Uh, the complexities and length of this project do will require a significant time commitment by staff if it is done in house, which should have an impact because that would affect workflow on other capital and firefield projects that we're currently working on. So staff has issued a request for proposal for this project as well from a civil engineering firm uh, that that specializes and has expertise in pipeline design, survey and right away. And again, this project has also been identified in the capital budget for fiscal year twenty fourth through twenty six.
Alex, how, just for thought process, how often are we pumping water from Sula Huli into? And and so how how often are we even using this pathway?
The, that's a great question, uh, Director Schmidt. The last time we pumped was in 2021 during the drought.
Yeah, and then and then prior to that, I mean, just like roughly what's a frequency that we would use it?
I I think the last time before that was in 2015.
Uh huh.
Uh, before that, I'm I'm not too sure, but I could.
Generally, very infrequently.
Yeah.
In large part because what it takes to operate that facility. Of course, we got to bring out a generator, we got to keep it fueled and we have to manage this overland flow with the property owners and temporary bridges over creeks. It's quite an operation. So.
Okay, that's that's the part that I'm getting at, which is, you know, the I I understand why we're electrifying, doing electrification, be able to use that more frequently. This pipeline project, like, how much we are we actually losing in in terms of evaporation and and infiltration? Like, i- i- it's just a cost benefit of a of the hassle. Right. So it would, but understanding that there's also landowner implications of of needing to solve bridges and other things that that definitely adds to it, but.
Or maybe another way to ask it, ask it money is is um, you know, we we have our projected cost for using our own reservoir water and the cost of using Sonoma water. Sounds like not all reservoirs are the same. So if we go through with this project, you know, how expensive is that water for us? And and how expensive is it for us to get to that point?
Yeah, so the um, our strategic water supply assessment, I don't have the numbers, but looked at um, by electrifying and staff's always considered this kind of a piece of the electrification process essentially integrating Sula Huli into our system, like all our other lakes where, you know, a flip of the switch that that would result certainly in more frequent usage. And then you benefit from the rains that fill it up because you've pulled it. So it it brings it into the system and does give uh, some calculated additional water into the system. It also, you know, very much is kind of a foundational piece as we look to our larger projects, having this integrated to our system and how we move water as part of some of these larger projects we're considering.
And evaporation is like four feet a year, so it's not insignificant.
Ben and and Alex, is it, it's, when you think about Sula Huli, it it's almost like it was designed as a, an emergency fallback. Not as, yeah, so not as a integrated part of our water supply system, as as you just said, Ben, that's obvious. Are there, in in addition to reducing some of the water losses dealing with the um, you know, the management issues of moving water, does the pipeline also allow us? So it it, the pipeline plus electrification allows us to think about that water supply in a very different way, right? So rather than very occasional use, it could be an ongoing. We could be moving smaller amounts of mu- water on a regular basis.
Yes, and the nature of Sula Huli, it's a very shallow lake. And the evaporation is very quick over the summer. So by having a system where you just turn it on, you benefit from that water, you pull it into your system. The the more consolidation of water you can do into your system, right? Less evaporation because you're reducing the overall service air, surface area of the lakes. So it's really, um, yes, we we'll be able to consider Sula Huli as more of an operational part of our system, use it far more frequently and benefit in really a whole number of ways going forward.
And and maybe just, just one more point on this. Does the pipe, having a pipeline all the way, does that reduce some of the energy requirements for moving water? Um, I believe Nacasio is at a lower elevation than Sula Huli. Can we maximize the benefits of that elevation differential to, you know, reduce uh, uh, pumping costs? Does that even allow us to consider maybe smaller motors at, you know, uh, at at the pump station? Because we're moving small amounts of water on a regular basis rather than large volumes of water at one time. Can we rethink the 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 pumping requirements for Sula Huli with this uh, with with these improvements?
Can I just make one quick comment on that? And I think it's important to continue to look at the the big, big water supply picture and and start thinking about additional ways to get water into Sula Huli in the future as redundancy, resiliency, all the things we keep talking about in that way. I would hate to limit ourselves right now with a smaller pump or something like that because potentially we could be bringing more water into the future a- as part of that, but.
Well, keep, just keep in mind thermodynamics. To lift a pound of water, X feet is so many horsepower. Whether you do it quick or you do it slow, it's the same energy. So there may be some benefit from PG&E for reduced rates or something like that. But as far as the quantity of energy, it's it's a fungible thing. And you're, you've got to put so much energy in to lift so much water that high. So.
Yeah, yeah, I I don't, I don't, I mean, I I I'm not an expert on thermodynamics like you are, Larry, but I'm still struggling a little. I mean, my car, my new car gets a lot more horsepower per gallon than my old car. So what's, could you just explain that?
Absolutely. It's very simple. They reduce the weight of your car. That's number one. So you have to not drag so much metal around. Number two, they've improved the combustion efficiency and they also made the aluminum, the engine's aluminum.
I mean, I guess that's my point, combustion efficiency. Light, you know, better engines aren't, can't we benefit from some of those things?
Doesn't work that way with electric motors. Electric motors, there are efficiency improvements, but not those kind of improvements. Not to go from the mileage of of 12 miles to the gallon to 30 miles to the gallon. You're going to go from eighty-five percent efficiency to eighty-seven percent efficiency. And and you're going to pay a million dollars to do that. I mean, it's not free. But it's an ongoing gift. So, you know, your your thinking is good. It's just, don't get overly excited about the benefit because it's minor.
Ran Ranjev, for example, one area we do look at where you, it does often make sense to invest to be more efficient is variable frequency drives, where we have pumps that may just be on or off, but you don't always need that much horsepower. So you hook up a variable frequency drive to that pump and you can operate it at a much lower rate. And that, you do get a return on that investment and you are more effective. So we do look at pump stations for those opportunities.
But there's energy loss in the VFDs. So it's not free.
Right.
You know, they're, what they're doing is reducing the frequency of the power from 60 cycles to some lower number. The motor will still turn, but it's not turning as efficiently as it was. Motors have peak values. And when you're operating off of that peak, you lose, it goes to heat, basically. And it's not as bad as it used to be. It's all done electronically now. It used to be done with just resistance. They just, they just turn the voltage down by sending less voltage in by heating up water. But um, that's the the issue. It's good thinking and keep thinking that it's good thinking. It's just, like I said, don't get overly hopeful because the the benefits are small in in this.
I wonder, though, along the lines of what Ranjev is mentioning is that i- if we're looking at at slowly moving water over time, maybe, you know, that, does that create an opportunity for for some sort of solar system that is, you know, running a pump at a at a regular but slow pace? Moving water on a regular basis or are we, or do we need to be able to have the ability to move large volumes on a short period? Just.
Go ahead. The um, Sula Huli um, has complexities because as um, Director Sampson noted, it is part of a potential larger strategy where we would want to move large amounts of water and we do have large pumps there. This particular pump station, we are not done working with PG&E and looking at other opportunities as we think of electrification, particularly now that there may be issues with direct electrification. So that, we we still need to see that effort through. I I think we are cautious about um, how creative we get in Sula Huli and what the implications may be for these larger projects. So that's part of our calculus as we talk to the board.
Okay, that's helpful to know that we need that capacity. That that makes a big difference. Thanks.
Well, if you'll recall back to Paul Celley's presentation, what he said was there's power enough to run eight 100 horsepower motors, but there's not power enough to start an 800 horsepower motor. Now, that seems to me to be a pretty critical situation. Now, you mentioned the possibility of a generator and just to put things in perspective, the generator we're talking about to run this thing would not fit in this room. Okay, it's the size of a locomotive engine. These are big generators. And uh, costs millions of dollars. And um, so it it's really big stuff. And and what the problem is, is the wires are tiny and you got to convey the the current out to that point. The voltage is easy. The current is where the problem is, that it's just like the flow of water. You've got to get that flow out there of the electrons and and. You've got to get that flow out there of the electrons and and otherwise it won't start. You push the button and it's going, or all the lights dim in West Marin, as I said the last time. But it seems to me that issue needs to be resolved, you know, what we're going to do there because, I mean, this whole thing may be dead if I mean, maybe we just fight the bullet and put the generator there, you know? Like, I mean, there are advantages to generators that they don't depend on the grid. And you can run them when you want to run them. The problem is the air quality specs have been so difficult on these large motors. I mean, they become surplus basically. And they're phased out. So that's a big problem with them.
So clearly, the electrical issues out there are really complicated. Ben, you did, you mentioned PG&E and the ongoing exploration with them about of all possible options. You know, there are, there are some perceptions that, you know, PG&E may not, you know, they may, they may be biased in what they would like to see go out there. What is, I mean, would there be a good reason maybe to talk to some other, you know, groups with respect to energy, you know, particularly those that maybe are more specialized in microgrids or don't have the same incentive structures as PG&E?
It's a good point. I believe we
We are reaching out to another consultant firm to look and explore that option. So we are doing that. Yeah. Okay.
There's no gas out there, though.
No, there's not.
You know, unless we're willing, I mean, that's where the Cogen comes in and you can do it, but you got to have gas.
Right.
And then the problem is, of course, the gas purveyor is the electric purveyor. So they're normally they're not. You go in Southern California, you got Southern California gas and you got Southern California Edison. They're compete with each other, but when they both hook together, it's a lot trickier.
I mean, Larry, I think I keep coming back now to microgrids. You know, there was grand jury report out on emphasizing now the use of microgrids here in Marin. We're going to be, we're going to hear more and more about this. I think to not have really good evidence on what's feasible and what's not is going to be harder to to justify, you know, we we just need that evidence on what's possible.
Goes back to thermodynamics, Ranji.
I know, but sure, but
Got to have the energy source.
Sure, like whatever the evidence looks like, whatever it tells us, but to be able to have it. If we don't have it, we're just, we're just continually vulnerable.
Sure.
Any public comment?
Oh, well, just last one, just to kind of wrap up next steps. I just kind of wrap up and staff issued a request for proposals for these four projects. We will be receiving and evaluating
Or separate?
Separate, separate. So we will be receiving these proposals here in November and we'll be validating those. And at some time in the future, we'll be coming back to the board to execute and award contracts. And we are looking, if everything goes well, looking to start the design on these projects here early next year. And that's it.
It's exciting stuff, Alex. Thank you for the presentation. And I hope we can continue some of these discussions, you know, and a, and a, you know, with all, with with good engagement.
Absolutely.
Now, public comment.
Larry, do you mind if I, so thank you very much for this and especially getting these projects moving forward. Looking at San Geronimo Treatment in particular. Looking at that facility and putting the new roof on is great, especially with the fire danger piece. It would be interesting to see if we could expand that at all to include some more home, some more hardening of that structure, whether it's even the gutters that are protected or any other spaces that are that are looked at because that that facility is square in the middle of a fire pathway from Nevada all the way down. It's burned numerous times. And so to be able to take this advantage and harden that as best as possible to would be would be appreciated if it is, if it's one, not too late, but if two, if it is feasible in terms of the the project budget.
Okay. Yeah, most of that building is made out of concrete. So it's it's pretty hard and except for the roof, that's kind of the
It's the openings that worry about me.
Bingo.
So anytime we can protect the openings would be important. Thank you.
What about the fuel storage?
The fuel for the generators, that's all concrete. So that's their fire
Below grade or
Above grade, they're they're fire rated, above grade, a concrete storage tank. So those are not an issue.
It shouldn't be an issue.
No, there should not be an issue.
And the generators too?
Correct. Yeah, they have the enclosure. So everything there is is pretty bulletproof.
Is as good as it's going to be, huh?
Exactly.
Good. Jed, anything?
Nope, all good. Are you looking for refer to the board or this is just for information?
This is strictly informational.
All right. Thank you.
Cool. Public comment?
Yes, there are two, Mr. Jameson and Larry Minikis. Go ahead, Mr. Jameson.
Yes, I hope the Phoenix Bon Tempe Pipeline Project and the Sulehuli Project will soon have updated cost per acre foot estimates reported, particularly given their likely rare use. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Minikis, please. Mr. Minikis.
Larry.
There we go. Good morning. Um, I raised this with Director Sampson in that I think there's a lesson here in the use of TPO back in 2004. And why was it chosen? What were the parameters then? Why wasn't steel considered? Why are we back under 20 years replacing a roof that if we had done it the right way, the first time, which would have been steel, apparently, we wouldn't be having this discussion and we wouldn't be looking at these costs. And I think to understand how that was arrived at in 2004 would be very helpful forensic examination. Thank you so much.
Thank you. There are no further speakers.
Unfortunately, Larry, I think that's a philosophical issue in the management of the district in 2004. There has been a characteristic in this district of taking the lesser costing alternative routinely from my experience, which dates back to 2004 or actually dates back to 1977 or so when I first started working with the district as a consultant. So it's something I've observed and, you know, it it's an interesting roof choice. It's inexpensive. Relatively speaking. When do you think that would actually occur? The construction on the roof?
We're looking to do that this upcoming year in 2024.
Good. So hopefully after the rainy season.
Yes, for sure.
Did you have a question, Jed? No. Okay. Cool. Okay. Well, with that, thank you all. And look forward to seeing you next month. Okay, take care.